I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The people of the minutes approve second. Motion in a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
For same sign, then motion carried. Approval of the agenda?
Second.
There's a motion in a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
For same sign, then motion carried. Number one, South Creel and Poplar Grove Townships, Cove Road.
We've got a deal you just can't refuse.
Uh huh.
We're gonna fix all the south spots, all the broken spots, and put a two inch overlay on it, and then we're gonna give it to you.
For free?
For free! After all that money, we'll just give it to you.
And forecast for the last twenty years.
Yeah. So for twenty years, we shouldn't have to put any more.
Do we get that in writing?
Not from me, you won't, but...
You don't think you're putting a lot of money in there for twenty years?
That's what they're predicting, it'll last for twenty years, man.
Who's this? Who's they?
Um...
No.
What?
No.
No.
Yeah, Bill Collins, he did it. The people that are doing it are saying that.
The mill?
Yeah.
There's a need to be maintained, ain't there? Chip seal, crack seal.
I mean, it's a high-traveled road. We just can't afford to put that kind of money into it.
Noah, I understand where you're coming from, and I think that it's a real special case. There's no question in my mind that that road is different than most of the other roads that are township roads, you know, in this county. And I've been mulling this over in my mind, how we can do this, and there are sort of two ways that I see going about it, and I'd be equally in favor of either. The first is that for all the costs going forward, and probably even for this overlay project, the county could split the cost of managing it with each of the townships, so we could all go thirds, or we could work out a ratio going forward to help with the burden of it. I think that that's reasonable, and I'd be fine with that. The thing that scares me about making it a county road forever is sort of two things. The first is, is once it's done, it's forever, and that means that forevermore, people in Edmore are gonna be responsible for the upkeep of that road, and they never voted on it. Now, I've heard some of my colleagues saying that, you know, we, the commission, were elected to do that, to make decisions like that, and I would agree in general, but in principle, I think that if it's gonna be perpetual, the citizens of this county should have a say in it. So that's the first one, that I have a hang-up for forever. The second one that I have a hang-up for forever is, is that it sets a sort of flimsy precedent, which is to say that if, and I agree that this is a special case, and I agree that it's important in this case, where do we draw the line for if someone else comes and says, "This should also be a county road," or "This should also be a county road." And so I just don't wanna be arbitrary. So the two things that scare me is if the county takes over, which I think is reasonable, I think that's a reasonable thing to have happen, I wanna make sure that if we're doing this forever, that we do it the right way. But, that being said, I think it would also be very reasonable to jointly maintain the road with the townships, and it can remain a township road. So I don't know if either of those things are agreeable to any of you who've come here today, or to any of the other commissioners, but those are sort of my thoughts on it.
I agree with one thing, this is a road that has special circumstances to it. It goes through the traffic flow. There's not another road in the county that has as much traffic flow, not a township road. I don't even know if there's a county road.
Where?
I think number one.
Or I thought of one.
Or under one. A count I saw, that this was, that Cove Road came in at number two. On one, when, I don't know, one county, it was probably done several years ago, but it was the second busiest road of all the counties down there. It's right up there.
And I think traffic count is what should designate, whether it's county, township, federal, state, you know, whatever.
Kevin, do you have any rough estimates of what annual maintenance cost on that road would be?
You'd have to divide it all over years, it's...
You know what, like you said, you know, the chip seal and all that stuff?
Chip seal would be six years, and crack seal would be three, two, three years.
So it's not an ongoing annual, you don't have to go up there on an annual deal unless there's a problem?
Well, I mean, townships probably know how much it costs, right, over time, you guys have been paying for it.
It went a long time with really zero maintenance, and that's probably the problem, the reason why it's in the shape that it is. You know, until the last, I think, the original pavement was on that mile somewhere around ninety-four, and it didn't get a lot of work until, you know, it got raised because of the flood, but the one section of it. But the rest of it, I don't recall it having much of anything down it. Maybe if it was crack seal and all that, it would've held up a little longer, but...
Didn't we spend like twenty thousand, some thousand last year, and twenty some thousand the year before?
Oh, we did, yeah, that was, yeah.
Cause it seems like every patch right on the other side of the patch, it starts breaking up.
So that's probably a good number that you're hoping for.
And what's this current project gonna cost?
About a hundred and fifty thousand. Hundred and fifty-five?
Have you awarded the contract?
No. No, it's pending on, well, Mark would know this, but at the Poplar Grove meeting that I attended, they agreed that it would, they would, the Woodland Resort is gonna put up forty thousand dollars of this repair, and the rest of it would be split between the townships. And Creel has not had a meeting to decide this, and that's on Thursday, and, you know, that's why I definitely wanted to speak with you guys before we have our meeting, to see, you know, where we're headed here.
Sure. Well, I think you all should be commended for your Herculean effort of raising that kind of money for this, and then I think that it speaks to the motivation of you all to get something positive done here. So again, I wanna stress that I'm absolutely in favor of changing what's going on right now, but we just need to make sure that it's changed in the right way.
The bid is for taking out these bad spots down to a foot deep, putting in the proper fill, filling them back up, and saying, "Sign that black dirt," and everything, so it doesn't work.
If they figure a two-inch overlay will hold it.
After.
They're doing that this time?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they got these spots marked, and they're...
Yep.
Are they gonna put fabric down?
Well, I'm not sure, do they cover normally in the cut and patch, put fabric? I don't think they have in the past.
No, they're not big enough, so...
Yeah. But Kevin, what's that process called, that after we cut and patched, and then he goes through and fixes those burp paths? That thin overlay?
Well, it's leveling.
A leveling, leveling, and then it comes in with the two inch on top of that. So we don't create a new road that goes still like this, so it'll all be leveled up. And then the two-inch overlay.
Kevin, on average, what does chip sealing per mile cost?
It's certainly a little lower, but it's about eight thousand to ten thousand, depending on what other places.
Per mile?
Per mile.
But that's if you guys saw the chips in.
Right, that's us doing some of the labor.
That's a mile, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a mile.
There it is.
About a mile?
It's a little over a mile, a mile and... About a three or something.
Well, that's if you go all the way to the...
To the guard rail?
All the way to the guard rail, or all the way to the lake, otherwise, it's just basically a section mine where it's right at the trees.
So where are you guys talking about stopping at?
Right at the trees.
Oh.
Don't forget to stop.
Doesn't go all the way to the guard rail, which would be the end of the township or the section mine, because it'll continue in the water.
The county wouldn't take over ownership in that trees, then?
Well, that's your land. Well, would you?
You sure can, if you like, no, that's never...
That part of the road is a lot better than when it leaves the trees to the north.
Okay. Where are you gonna put this hundred and fifty grand, that's from the trees to the nineteen to the...
To the nine, yeah.
That's a mile.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So are you overlaying the spot that was raised, too?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, explain this to me, south of the culvert, then who takes care of that? Who has been taken care of, south of the, where the curve is, where the, you know...
When it curves and goes to the west, that's been Poplar Grove just sold.
That would be a township road for us at that point. But the section line is shared to the guard rail. And if that imaginary road would go over and down, that would be the continued section line, but it's in it, so it can stop at the guard rail. And as we transition to the west, then Poplar Grove takes out the right one, actually, this time.
No, that'd be a month. That won't work.
I guess it won't.
So does it make more sense to ask the commission to consider going to the guard rail?
Going to the what?
To the guard rail.
Which is one point three?
I'm not helping out here, Kevin would know.
Well, I guess... And this is, this is a pitch to basically everybody in the room, but if, if, if you all were looking to cover the cost of a rebuild, you know, an overhaul, and cover that cost, what I would feel more comfortable with is for the county to then agree for a certain number of years to cover the cost of maintenance, and then to be revisited, you know, thereafter. So in my mind, I would be, I would feel comfortable with making an agreement, provided that you all rebuild the road for the county to cover the costs of maintenance for, say, eight to ten years, and then for that agreement to be then revisited every five years thereafter. And then technically, it would remain a township road. And then that way, I think we avoid the dangerous precedent of sort of annexing in county roads forever without having anybody have a, you know, sort of a popular say. I don't know if that's reasonable, because I think that this is sort of an unprecedented situation, but I certainly think that that, at least to me, feels like a little bit more of a reasoned stance than signing a blank check forever on the county's behalf.
Okay, this is the, this is the Cove Road. This is another mile line here. So this is where you're talking about doing the project.
Correct.
And then this, this is where the tree starts, so then this curves about to here. Yeah, hey, that ends about here. So this is probably over half mile, just looking on the map here.
But then that would all be considered, would it, Kevin? Wouldn't that fit with the section line right there? And then we'd have to take it as a township from there, yeah?
Yeah, this is the township line, so anything past here would be Poplar Grove.
So what's that point, Kevin, to the edge of the trees, to there? Do you feel?
This would be the half mile line, so...
Okay.
Plus it'd be what, six, seven miles?
You can measure it.
Yeah, I think you got the measure tool that you're gonna use. Just from here.
Two, there. Perfect.
Twenty-three, sixty-three.
So it's slightly under half a mile?
Yeah, so there, half a mile. Two-sixty. Four-hundred.
When I, when I had somebody measure the road for, that's what they call the one point four, the guard rail. So that would be...
Yeah.
So, yeah, a little bit over.
Yeah, a mile.
So are you in a position as a commission now to help some? If we were to do from the trees to the highway, could you do from the trees to the guard rail? And then next year, then we jump into the suggestion that you're making, is that fair? That way, we'd have it all done complete. And then Poplar would take it from there. And then we could join, or, you know, try this agreement idea.
So, like you said, I think I asked the question earlier, you know, I wanna get this straight. Nineteen to the trees is a hundred and fifty-five, that's the quote you have on?
For a two-inch overlay with the information on the share.
Taking care of all the...
Taking it out, twelve inches, Kevin, and the commissioners, rather than six, I was quoted by another firm.
Did you get any estimations from those contractors on how long this would last with this type of traffic?
We had a third party come in and kinda give us the details on why the bids were different prices, and that was going construction. Cause the three bids were from Knife River, Tri-State, and Strata. So Mill kinda helped us work its way through it with his expertise that he has, and told us why the numbers are different. And Mill would kinda say that he thinks it'll last that long, but there'll be some interim maintenance, chip sealing. And then he kinda went into details about that, on when it should be done, how many years, and certain types of rocks come to the surface. Stuff Kevin already, you know, knows.
Well, Mark brought it up to me once, it just was a county road, or that?
You know, I did find out it was not.
It was, when I moved here in ninety-seven, it was gravel.
Yep.
So maybe it was two thousand and four that it got paid, I'm not sure when it got paid.
Ninety-seven.
Was it?
Yeah. Was that, was that through FEMA money?
I, I know I could look that up, Creel has the, that was like six point five thousand dollars, and the name of everyone is written on it.
Okay.
Townships each to me five thousand bucks.
Yeah, I think it was, yeah, past May, I can't remember.
FEMA money, just started the building.
Yeah, great close, we had property down there, past the guard rail, and he was a contractor working in the area, and he said, "You got this window to raise this money, and we'll pay it." I believe that's how it happened, so the hat got passed, and a lot of people donated, and we do have a list of those residents that all got on board the first time. Other than Aspen Township funds from both sides of the section line, cutting and patching.
Has the county contributed at all through the past fifteen, twenty years, do you recall?
On that road?
Yeah.
Not done, or nothing.
Not since I've been on a commission. No, it's been brought up a number of times, but...
How many mills are each of your townships at right now, just to be clear, as you say? And what's a mill worth out there?
We're at seventeen.
We're not, we're not maxed out yet, right? I don't know.
Yeah, we're five over, so twenty-three.
What's your total operating budget on a yearly basis, then?
I think John Mark said around fifty-five.
We're more like about eighty.
In the past, Kevin, when we've done this headway, we done a swap, township's taken over part of the county road, and we've taken township road on the truck road.
Last time we did that one, yes.
That's how we did that one?
That was the one I could think of, is that way.
Yeah, and that was a river road screen, but this is completely...
Is that right? No.
We swapped something there, but it wasn't very...
Even swapped? No.
I guess when we did the Nelson County line, we gave up Ramsey County four as a federal aid road, and that became a federal aid road. It's still county road, but it's not federal aid, we can't get federal aid dollars on county four. And we can't put this on federal aid because it's not a connector road, correct?
It's gotta connect the prepared to paid, right?
Yeah, it's gotta, it's gotta be paid to paid connection, can't be in. Or lead to a recreation area. Public recreation.
Public recreation area.
So we're thinking the only road in the county that has more traffic than this road is probably one.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
County road, so, yeah.
And all I judge is shared, and it's probably gotta be close, I would guess.
It's pretty close.
No, it's only the four hundred, five hundred each other.
Maybe the first couple miles, like two out here, where the homes are there, but that'd be...
After that, yeah, and down to three quarter, it's probably four hundred or something, it's, uh...
Next one, Kevin, two.
Two, oh, yeah.
First, two. That's what I was looking for, I couldn't find it, I think. Yeah, it's three twenty to a three quarter. Four sixty on three, four sixty-two.
I'd like to hear Kevin.
Taking this over?
Yeah. I mean, you're, you're gonna ultimately be the responsible party, I mean...
My only fear is setting the president and, I'm just gonna throw names out here, but Hackam Acres or, or, uh... Merton Stair, or Mertens, saying, "Hey, yeah, hey, Bill, we got this kind of traffic too, maybe we should get our roads, part of our roads, county road," that's, that's my only fear. And that's why we need to be careful how we explain why we're doing this.
I know I asked you last time, how many, how many houses are down in that area, and I can't remember if you told me, but... Some, I remember like two hundred and fifty something, wasn't it, or something like that? We're at... Just at the end of the Cove Road, where you'd have all the homes and everything like that? I can't remember what the number was, but...
Probably two hundred and fifty.
It's not that many?
No.
I'm just trying to get a sense of what percentage do we think is traffic going to the resort and seasonal type stuff versus people that live there?
And I think Kyle would always be willing to throw some money in.
No, I know he would, I'm not questioning if Kyle would be willing to or not, I'm just saying, you know, in my mind, I'm kinda running it from the aspect of, okay, say, say the resort wasn't there, and it was just a paved road for the township, it would be getting a lot less traffic and road would a little bit more. So maybe figuring out what the split was to a point, and then saying, okay, the resort is obviously driving the traffic, maybe the county can pick up the percentage of what we think is going to the resort or something like that, versus the locals. So, you know, it'd be pretty, somewhat of a fair share of chip and money into a point. Obviously, but my concern is, and I, I agree with everything that's been said, it's a, it's a different situation, it's probably the only road we're gonna have at this point that we're gonna see like this. Plus, it's already got pavement on it, which makes it a completely different pair. But, the, you know, just the, the cost of, I kinda lost where it was going, but...
How do you split this out?
Yeah.
You know, I...
It's the delineation of cost as well as, you know, it's just...
Did you say chip seal was eight thousand a mile? Oil is over ten, oil is really cheap this year.
Yeah, that, I guess what I was gonna say, when it just popped back in my mind, is the problem with adding additional road miles is there's no additional tax base to follow the road miles. So if we add two miles of pavement, we're not gonna collect one more dollar in taxes to, you know, take care of that mile of pavement, which at this point in time, you guys have a great offer coming in and saying, "We're gonna take care of the," you know, but, and, you know, exponentially speaking, in twenty years, hopefully, we got more tax base to cover it.
Well, there's, there's quite a bit of tax base out there.
No, I know there is.
I mean, we might say that last time.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's, it's growing.
I, I know, and I know it is, it's just...
There is a considerable amount, and we've spent a lot less or a lot more, the less traveled roads, in other parts of the county.
We have, yeah.
So...
But I think in some ways, that speaks to why this is such an important question, is that we've been tied to spending lots of money on relatively untraveled roads for years and years and years because they're county roads. Like, and that's, and that's kind of what my point is, is that it's really critical that if we choose to take action, that we take the right action.
I'm aware that this is setting, you know, like, you mean, you can be careful with the precedent, I don't think... I guess my feelings are that this road meets the need of needing, of becoming a county road, let's say. If there's, that's not to say there'll never be another road like it in the future, not likely to be too many of them, but if they do show up, maybe they should be county roads, too.
And perhaps you're right, you know, and so again, I'm not opposed to the county covering the cost of maintenance. I think that that's, that's reasonable. It's mainly just that it's, it sets precedent, and it'd be perpetual if we made the county road. That's why, in my mind, a sort of happy medium, if you all feel that that would be appropriate, is if you were gonna do another overlay, that I think that the county could potentially sign an agreement to cover the cost of the maintenance for X number of years, so that it is not perpetual. And whatever commission and whatever group of taxpayers that are there are still, you know, believe that it's a reasonable thing, that it should remain under county maintenance, they can choose at that point to re-sign it. You know? So then that way, we don't run into a situation, and it probably won't be like this, but we don't run into a situation where we have the county taxpayers paying for something that maybe isn't worthwhile. I do think it is worthwhile now, but unless it goes to a vote of the entire county, I just have a hard time feeling all right with straddling them to that extra cost on the bottom line forever.
How are perimeter roads decided, which one are perimeter roads, which one weren't?
It's kinda like two-mile jurisdiction in the city.
An extraterritorial, basically.
Yeah.
We're right, and we're extraterritorial, and... And then, what, what makes this not a perimeter road? Another question.
That's kinda what I was wondering myself, you know, I mean, I guess it's, it's just never been added into the agreement, I would suppose.
Maybe that's how we do it.
When, when we talked about that at a meeting, though, the city just kinda was like, it doesn't have anything to do with the city, doesn't direct traffic around the town, it don't have anything to do with it. Kinda doesn't, but I got out of it, so, you know, all the other ones do.
A lot of the local business owners would disagree, yes, whether it has anything to do with the...
Perimeter roads around the city.
Yeah, I've done, I've got one, I've run that one before.
I'm not saying this is, could be permanent, perimeter road.
At our township meeting a couple days ago, the residents of North Shore were there with some high-dollar homes, and they were telling us that when they leave, they're staying off the Seventy-seventh and Seventy-sixth, which is the former San Walter Tree Center Road, and then the Tower of Bayside Road, they'll actually come around and go through and try to get on that pavement by winning as soon as possible, because our township roads are in such bad shape. We're on an eighteen-day cycle with the county this year, for the first time, we haven't ever been part of the county, it's blinding. But we decided to go with you guys and newer equipment, blah, 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 but it's still the traffic that's out there with the camping and the lodging, everything else taking place at a Lakeshore Township that has three resorts, Poplar Grove, we got some traffic going on, and we can't tax them in any way to ask them for a five-dollar, a five-dollar road fee. So, we're trying to work with our township guys to do some ag water on some of those main arteries from Highway nineteen to these resorts, just to try it one year. Cause we can't keep up, it's wicked. So let's talk about that next.
For the sake of continued discussion, those of you who have assembled here, you know, would you share your thoughts on, on sort of what I've suggested? Is potentially having, you know, you guys covering the upfront cost and sort of trading that, right? We're talking about things that are traded to the county, to me, that's a trade. You know, you, you pay the upfront cost to give it an overlay, and the county should be responsible for it for a while. That seems reasonable to me, but I, you know, again, I'd like to hear your opinion on it.
That'd be our second choice.
Yeah. You know, Creel is in a position here, too, kinda like when you say somebody from Edmore is paying for this road. You look at where Creel Township is, and we, you know, the precedent is, we're gonna share fifty-fifty on a road next to us, but really, a majority of our population doesn't use this road at all either. So, to me, it's like, I'm representing Creel, I'm saying, "We're gonna spend all this money on a road that we don't have a lot of houses on, and I would like to be able to say, "But the county's gonna take it from now on, so, so we're done now. This is gonna cost us a bunch of money, and now we can move forward."
You know, and I look at the argument from both perspectives, cause we say, you know, like, for instance, somebody in the northern tier of the county is gonna pay for this, well, people that live in Devil's Lake, they'll pay for the county roads that collect that come into Devil's Lake. You know, so, you know, everybody's in the same boat together. We're a county, we all operate together, we're all helping each other, we're all part of the same, you know, economic development corridor, essentially, you know? Everybody needs good roads. Without good roads, you'd get infrastructure, you know, you don't have anything, essentially. And, you know, you know, we, the mill lake is such a huge portion of what we do out here, that, that we wanna make sure we have good roads to... you know, the lake is such a huge portion of what we do out here, that that we wanna make sure we have good roads to be accessed.
So let me get this straight now, so you got a hundred and fifty five that you're gonna do this work on. Woodlands agreed to pay forty, you got one fifteen left. Okay, what's township's gonna cover?
We're gonna split that.
You're gonna split? And you're good to go with that?
Providing
We have, Creel hasn't had a meetings to discuss this yet, for two days. Tentatively, you know, at the Poplar meeting, that's what was decided by Poplar, is that if Creel will come on board for half, they'll go ahead, they'll pay the other half. So we can't have any legal meetings, so we're just here as
Your best guess, you think they'll vote for that?
Um, that's my best guess.
So so after that, you want the county to take it over? Would you be interested in taking it over on a third, third, and a third?
Can your third be this year to take it from the trees to the guardrail? What would that run, Paul or Kevin, you think?
Cause certainly that that area needs some repair as well.
Yeah, and we've actually put some paint on the ground to cut and patch.
Roughly half of what, the one fifty five, just for throwing numbers around.
If you wanted to do a full patch, I mean, which overlay all the way to the
It's not near as much, it was not near as much on patchy, Kevin.
No, you'd say
Yeah, just the overlay cost is gonna be Seventy fifty, sixty seven.
Well, so for the cost of that entire road, the maintenance, would you expect to be around twenty thousand a year? I mean, just on average, if you averaged out the costs?
That's what they said they were spending, I I would think it'd be
I, you know, that's when we were patching, but you know, if you spend it over the years, that the road's been there, way, way, way less, because there's probably a period
You could maybe use eight, ten thousand per year, and that would be a generous number.
Okay, and so you you feel that that would cover that full length?
Okay.
Yes, and I guess I look at it from the aspect too, if if we're gonna get a two inch overlay of the pavement and all that, it should be in pretty good shape for the first so many years that we would have control of it too. I mean, you know, that would, the maintenance cost would be lower in that.
And you come back and
At least until we chip seal it, oh, you're fine.
Kevin Milk made a comment that, you seen how they did Highway Nineteen last year? New, and then this year they came back and did the chip seal the following year, so then right away, you just tie it together. So that would be that first commitment of what, eight, ten?
So it's maybe fifteen grand next year, basically, take over the chips next year.
The following year, we're doing brand new one, and so it'd be a good fit to do it two years later.
I I think, you know, my thinking, the fair way to do it for the rest of the county is the county to come in on a percentage of it. And the township still stay there on a percentage. What that is, I don't know, but it's what we can agree to, and I think that's the fair way for the rest of the counties. I mean, there's other roads out there that are getting used a lot, but they're probably not in this kind of traffic zone. And then go with something that three years, four years, five years, something like that, agreement, and then revisit it. You know, and then the next commission wanna come do, have a chance to put their thoughts into it.
And then next
That time you can put it up to the POCUS too.
Sure. And not just that, not just the commission would have their thoughts on it, but the townships would have their chance to to renegotiate too. You know, so, cause that's the other thing, is if you make it a county road, you guys don't really get a say anymore. You know, and so that's that's something that I feel like you may wanna consider.
And I think that would be the fair way to do it, I mean, especially in, you know, I can't see anybody in the county that would argue that that is in the second most traveled road in the county. And County One, you know, that's probably taking, they have that by themselves.
What do you guys think, and you wanna get this done?
It's for October first. So that means
How much of County One went under water that you lost? And there's there's a big chunk of road right there that you don't have to maintain and redo. We took over the military road though, that used to be a trail. When we lost the road under the water, they gave us the military road.
So you guys didn't pay the pain back? Wasn't that done through the Dike Project or something?
Didn't they raise that road? Yeah, they raised it. We used federally money to do this, cause they they gave us, they took away the part under the lake and put that one. As you can see, those two don't peck anymore, so that's, you know, they had heartburn with that, but, you know, we're supposed to Who had that road? That was a township road that was just a big hill, you know, narrow and So there's a township road that the county took over.
Which one?
Military
People only chasing that, wouldn't they?
Federal They they wrote us a letter, said, this is your option, do it now or never.
I mean, so I guess in my mind, if you sort of match all this, if we were gonna do, you know, percentage basis, where, you know, it would remain a township road, the county could cover the lion's share of it. I would be fine with that, especially if you guys are gonna do an overlay. Uh, I think that that would, that would be a fine way, so long as it gets revisited occasionally, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be every year, I I think that we could have an agreement that could be every five, every eight some number of years, so that way you know going into it that you're gonna get most of your money's worth by doing this overlay. Um, at that point, I feel, I would feel comfortable saying the county can take over lion's share of maintenance.
Around five years, it doesn't get out of hand. Eight or ten years, it can get out of control.
I'd I'd rather revisit it before it gets out of hand. You know, and have the townships come back or the residents come back when there's a problem. You know, we don't wanna see you guys in here
All part of this is we don't wanna see it.
If we're only coming in when when there's a problem, then we're gonna start, you know, checking the door before kinda thing, but, you know, if it's, you know, every couple of years, I think would be plenty soon enough, and then we can see how the maintenance has been working, how um, different things like that, are you guys satisfied with it, we're satisfied with it, you know, re-up for another couple of years kinda thing, or or schedule some some scheduled maintenance that you would like to see. Kevin can work that into his budget, um, you know, so it's not a surprise saying, oh, all of a sudden, now we're really dissatisfied because now there's a big hole here, there's a big deal that you guys didn't fix. So
I I think, I guess in my mind, if if we're gonna do a split share, the best way to do it would have, would be a formal document, kinda like the perimeter roads, between the county and the townships, and then we would appoint a board where maybe one township officer can be township, and one commissioner probably who has the highway portfolio. They get together at the same time every year to talk about the maintenance for next year, so we can budget ahead of time. Everyone agrees on what needs to be done next year, we stay with the budget and we get it done. That way, we can stay on top, but on a year to year basis, we can make the agreement for, you know, four or five years, then we can readjust the agreement as it comes, cause if if the traffic count keeps rising, it's gonna more likely be because of, you know, additional resort traffic and stuff like that, maybe at that point, the county needs to take on a bigger share.
Well, and I think there's also lots
Hunter Hills
Lots too.
I think Hunter Hills has eight blocks old now.
Yeah, there's gonna be additional houses put out there too, so I mean, maybe the maybe the split needs to be changed, and we can address that as it comes, but I I think that's a good way to do it as well, it's just a matter of what do you, what do you think a fair cost share is, I guess?
Well, I think, you know, if if you guys are gonna do an overlay, I'm okay, at least for the first five years, taking the lion's share of it to the county, because to me, that 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 would be fair.
That was my thought, I was gonna mention now, I feel county is probably more at peace than county roads. And with our engineer on board, and one question I have for him, did we work the fifteen thousand in there to put the chip seal on for next year's budget?
Yeah, we could, the only thing is that two years, that it would match up with all the rest of our roads?
In that area?
Yep.
Yeah.
Which makes more sense, because I don't think it has to be chip sealed the next year.
No.
Two years, no, would be great, yeah.
So we wanna get that on before six, like
Yeah, then it would get us, it would get us on the schedule end too, so we're scheduled in at the same time with the other ones, right?
Exactly. My thought is the county take out of it and township split the rest. That would be my thought, cause I think the county should have, you know, the lion's share of the state, so to speak. And fifty percent of it, we're gonna have lion's share of it, what should happen to the road.
So when you chip seal
And I feel that should
When you chip seal, open a bill?
Pardon me?
When you chip seal
I think we could include in the agreement that the chip seal could be covered by the county, at least in the first round. You know, to ensure that, you know, if you, again, if you guys are paying for an overlay, we should be paying for something too. It's just it's hard to do it when there's, everything's been budgeted for this year already.
Two years old.
Yeah, and that sure would be nice if the commission was in a position to take it from the trees to the guardrail for that, that number that Paul pulled up in footage. What was that, a half a mile?
Twenty thirteen.
Twenty, two hundred feet, so probably wouldn't have to be a two inch overlay out there. Just a cut and patch with maybe an inch and a half, because it's so much better in the trees, but then it would make it complete from Nineteen to the guardrail, other than that's Poplar Grove as that thing turns to the west. So is that that number that could be used for that? That you guys are saying a chip seal in two years, or next year, but we wouldn't have to. We could wait until your rotation.
If we're gonna, if we're gonna do it from the trees to the guardrail, if you wanna do it at the same field, you should do it at the same time as you do from
Well, that's where we're gonna come on the first year, if the commission is able to do that.
Nine.
Yeah, as we, as we do the big numbers from the trees to Highway Nineteen, can you take that smaller number to the guardrail?
Seventy five.
No, I don't think it's gonna be seventy five, cause there's not near as much cutting and patching, and wouldn't have to be that two inch overlay. Maybe it could be an inch and a half in there, because that road has held together so much better for some reason.
Higher ground.
Tree roots, whatever's holding it together. Higher ground?
I, that's a question we have to ask Kevin, being working on the budget, if we had a short notice.
Only one look, without saying that's wrong.
We'd have to get a better handle on what it's gonna cost.
Gotta catch some numbers.
I mean, it seems possible that we could do the remainder of that overlay next year. You know, cause we haven't done the budget yet for next year, and then still do the
The trouble is you're gonna get the price, good price now.
Yeah. Sure, it costs more to mobilize.
Sixty five.
Is there any way we can take it from like the general funds, or is that impossible?
Well, we would, we would have, we would have balances sitting in the highway lines, but we'd have to do an amended budget if you went over the top of what we had budgeted already. It's possible to do it, it's just a matter, you know, how much money will we have carryover projected and stuff, so we don't get too tight.
Seventy five scared the hell out of me, but
Yes.
Thirty five or forty, I mean
To be, to be honest with you when I had, when I had a quote from Tri-State, I had it go all the way to the guardrail.
Okay.
Then it was a hundred and eighty thousand. That's what it was.
So you're talking like maybe thirty five?
Yeah. You know, that's but then, then when for the sake of hoping to get this done, then the bids kinda started more on the, we went to the one mile, see, at that time then, for the first mile, I think there was a bid for a hundred and thirty thousand. But no patching, you know, and so then these numbers that we've worked together.
You tried to see what you could fit into your budget, whatever what you have for dollars, yeah.
What are you gonna do, do this work, like after the busy season, or after Labor Day?
Before October first, well, we were told it should be done.
We have some time to find out a pretty solid figure on what it would cost from the trees to the guardrail.
Yeah, so we agree with that, or that's a great idea.
I suggest that you get a handle on that. And then imagine you have to go back to your townships and see if this agreement would be alright with them?
You plan on going to handle with the mile, with the mile right away?
I think we're gonna have to get a price on the whole thing. Tri-State.
You can get a, you can get a price tomorrow? The problem is we self-avoid, for the commission being
It's not before we discuss it.
Right, night premiere. And we've talked about a lot of things tonight, we should try to go back to the townships see if some of this is
See if any of these agreements are, agreements are agreeable.
Right, and I think to to delineate some of the things that we have specifically talked about, it sounds to me like the townships would split the cost of the mile from Highway Nineteen to the trees. Potentially, the county would be looking at, depending on the cost, covering the remainder of that to the curve. Um, and then also covering the full chip seal two years down the road, and from the point of that until five years from now, the cost would be split fifty, twenty five, twenty five, for all other maintenance. Does that make sense? Does that?
Sounds like
It's a little bit right.
Softening up the curve makes sense.
Yeah. And that'd be only fair, and then we would, as a Poplar Grove, try to make arrangements somehow, maybe whatever, to continue that pavement just right out to the west, to the Mansell subdivision, which is, Kevin, are there how many feet?
I would say three, four hundred.
The last one is still Boulevard at the next mailbox.
Oh, the next mailbox.
So we would try to do that then, to make it
We'll, we'll be just, yeah, I think that's reasonable. I'm 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 okay with at least allowing, you know, this discussion to move forward, you know, with with the county and the townships at at that basis.
Yeah, so the county's just participating in the cost, they're not taking the ownership of it?
Right.
Yeah. I like the idea of doing it that way, simply because then we allow whoever would be the township, you know, supervisors at that point, as well as the commissioners, to continually work on it together and adjust the split, things like that, as we go down the road, but you guys will get some cost relief, nice new road. And then, well, we can work on it as we go forward.
And there's at least parts of it that don't meet the county safety standard.
Yeah, sure, that's worth it as well.
Grade rates where it was through the water, that's, doesn't meet the width slopes of the
But if it remained, if it made it, remained a township, we wouldn't have to bring it up to those standards necessarily, you just covered the costs.
And that is an issue.
Taking ownership, all that, worried about setting a precedent down the road, because we do have a lot of other resorts and a lot of other subdivisions within the county that could say, hey, what about us?
Well, and even doing this agreement will open us up to that same thing, but I'd rather have the discussion about an agreement like this, rather than a discussion about taking ownership.
Yeah, and and like I said, the other thing about this is, this is probably the only, well, not the only, but one of the only really highly traveled paved roads, it's not a county road in the county. That's under township control, I mean, there's other neighborhoods that have paved roads, but that's just for local traffic to hold. Uh, any other maybe resort or something like that, if they came in and saw that we had a precedent and said, well, yeah, maybe we could do a mag water thing with that launch or something like that, we're gonna split to help them out, or, you know.
Across that bridge?
Yeah, we'll cross it when we get there. That's the whole point of not locking ourselves in.
No parting to it.
Do we, do we all feel good about this?
We'll come back with some prices and some decisions.
And we'll, we'll look forward to this discussion again at the next commission meeting, I think.
We should be short
Put some of the agenda, Kevin.
Tell them what's on your contract.
What the difference
Kevin says, just split up like the first mile and then the twenty four hundred feet.
Does that question
Take, and watch out for salt cedar. Eradicate it when you can. If there's a spray called Ursine, I'll go
Thanks, guys, thank you very much.
Kevin?
Okay, this update on our color projects. Moving right along, I guess, we did have one complaint today on the baloney bridge, I don't know, did you get a call?
Yes, I did.
Did you go look at it?
I have not yet, I didn't have a chance, I've been looking.
I would appreciate it if you looked at it first, it's kinda blown out of proportion.
I would, I would take a look for it.
Okay.
I'll talk to you about it.
Yeah. And also with our projects, we did get the mag water done now. Just so you up to speed on that. And then the traffic counts on Fourteenth, Fourteenth Street Northeast were up about, on the average, of fifty cars a day, and then up from Were up about, on the average of fifty cars a day, and then went from two seventy-five to three twenty-five. Um, on the high days, it went from three ninety-three to four eighty-nine. And on the low days, it was one seventy to one eighty-four. And really not a big jump on the days that Tony was close. Maybe a little bit, but not, not huge. Which I was surprised, the day they gravelled, there was a jump. And I think, when they closed it again, we may put that counter out there again when they closed it, but that's not supposed to be scheduled to be closed for quite a while on, so. We're doing flagging to keep track of it. So any questions there? And then also I had an estimate for the hot mix overlays, I talked about it real, uh, at a previous meeting. And it's sixty-five thousand, most of them are on Ramsey three there that we talked about. And I had budgeted ninety thousand. And that's using the prices that we got when we called for quotes back in April for hot mix overlays and Strata. Strata and Tri-State paving gave us quotes, and Strata have a, a plant set up in town here where, but Tri-State is in Cheyenne, so we use it.
So are you saying we just found twenty-five thousand dollars in the budget?
Yeah.
Excellent.
And like I say, there's, there's. Money in my budget, but I need to look to see where it works. And the last thing I have is I need to order a, order culverts for our stock in our yard, and they're gonna cost twenty-nine thousand, nine nineteen, and twenty cents.
Motion. Motion in a second, all in favor, sign if others say aye.
Aye.
Aye. A pull the same sign?
Yeah, that will.
Oh, yes. I was still.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Brown? Chris?
Aye.
Light one?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye. Motion carried.
That's all I have.
Turn lane, uh, I would do finish that for you, will ya?
Yeah, um, Olson's got those, the turn lanes on highway two, Olson's got those, and he has the equipment set in Church's Ferry, and I don't know if he started yet or not, I don't think so, do you know? Yeah, I don't think he started yet, but not sure what he's waiting for. They got straw bottles put down, or what he's waiting for, I'm not sure, but he has, he has started over there.
I'll ask him. That's like information, if they have a contract.
Yeah, but Greg Olson's got it. All the way on that fourth door.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
Very much. Business, approve special permit. There's one, two, three, four, five.
That's great.
Three.
Move it.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, signify if others say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pull the same sign. Be in that motion carried. Approve letter of transfer. Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, go call please.
Chris?
Aye.
Light one?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Brown? Olson?
Aye. Motion carried. Approve library board appointment.
Move to approve, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, signify if others say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pull the same sign. Be in that motion carried. Approve Ramsey County Board Department.
Move to approve, second.
There's a motion in a second. All in favor, signify if others say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pull the same sign. Be in that motion carried. Discussion on two thousand eighteen budget. You want, okay, we'll come back to that, okay?
Let me take a look.
Yeah.
Approve pledge security.
Move to approve.
That's in there. Yeah. Second. All second.
There's a motion in a second.
Yeah, just asking a question, did we have approved pledge securities before? I can't recall, but I thought we saw someone.
First, first weekend in July?
Yeah.
I think it was earlier than that, but it was more.
Yeah. So he's just got change since then, apparently, we've got that since, okay.
Yeah.
We have to do it every six months.
Yeah, that's what I was just wondering, because.
Well, that would've been about how long ago would we have done that, I think?
Yeah.
Was it January?
Yeah, because that was early on.
Early, I'm confused.
Early on, when, when Jeff and I came on this.
Okay, okay.
Okay, there's.
I just, I just need to use, I'm sorry.
There's a motion in a second, all in favor, signify if others say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pull the same sign. Be in that motion carried. Approve purchase of A D, A E D batteries and pads.
Eight seventy-five, is that the?
That's the one, yeah. Yeah.
Something that needs to be replaced every four years.
So it's five, is that, that's all that we have with?
Yes.
Should we replace them all, is it okay?
Yeah.
All second.
There's a motion in a second. All in favor, signify if others say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pull the same sign, be in that motion carried.
Is there any place we should add another one or two of that?
Yeah, man.
Do you have one?
We have one.
The memorial building has one.
One in every floor, correct?
Four.
Yep. Look, you got one in every floor, one in the memorial building alone, or where the heck? Sorry, man. Because we just put that one in the memorial building, what, two years ago, I think.
Would that, would that be Kristen's job to tell us whether or not we're basically compliant?
Yeah, Jeff's right. And that's, she brought it to us last time, we put it in the one.
Well, that, that, and I would assume recommendation maybe from Librarians, Mr. Pell, and if they had any additional ones.
Yeah, for a building of our size, you know, fours, you'd do that.
Oh, that's good. The only time that I would think it would be one in the basement, the memorial building would be wronged up.
Yeah.
Maybe efficient or not.
Kind of give that idea of one in the basement.
You got us in the basement here?
Yeah.
Yes.
One in each one?
Yeah.
Yep. One at cabin?
And one in the memorial building.
So we should have six.
Well, we have more cores coming in places.
We'll be four.
Yeah, we should have one, which more doesn't have one.
Oh, they all do.
They all do like.
Yeah. Well, may, maybe we're not replacing the pads on the one in the memorial building.
Because that's.
It's only year two.
Yeah.
Yeah, I bet you that's what the situation is. We can ask Kristen next time.
There is.
I should ask her, ask her.
Approve amendment to grant agreement for out-of-school suspension.
Something from Rhonda.
Yeah, this is.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is the, the out-of-school suspension thing that we've been utilizing the attending care facility for. So when they have, you know, instead of, you get a, a kid that's unruly, they decide to put him on out-of-school suspension, they don't just go home.
Watch TV.
They don't watch TV, or they, they, they go, they have somebody watch them, they do their homework.
And it just changed the, the, uh.
They just did.
The date.
Yep.
Oh, so it's the exact same agreement.
Exact same agreement, we're just going through.
Second. There's a motion in a second, all in favor, signify if others say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pull the same sign. Be in that motion carried. Approve council check. There's a motion there, second. One of these pretty handy-dandy checks there.
So we'll just put the checks back out again then, like we always do?
You have to fill out a form and. Have some ways.
Be awesome.
There's an motion in a second, you'll call now, please, since I want to get a check.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Light one?
Aye.
Brown? Chris?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye. Motion carried. Okay, now we'll go back to discussion on two thousand eighteen.
Can you do the visiting next?
Okay. You're gonna visit with us? Okay, and not all roads.
Yeah.
Are there any visitors in delegation who would join us this week, Mark?
Five minutes left. There's a walk. Has the county ever been asked, uh, or do you have anything in place that would do a cost share on Magwater to help townships? Just on main arteries?
We've done a seventy-five, twenty-five with homeowners.
On county roads?
Like county roads, yes.
Would that help get all the road? If we did seventy-five, twenty-five and something like that?
To the west, yeah, like, like, we wanna do it on, uh.
North shore and, and west bay over there, or?
Uh, so right now, Gollan has set up at this, the former, what we call the San Walter Chief Center Road. They're, they're borrowing out of there for John Deere, for that project. So he's put down Magwater. So when you drive that from highway nineteen, I wish he had his pit all the way to Lake. Because it's that nice, you know, coming off nineteen, and they're hauling semis, and they're loaded, and that road is like compacted, tight. You go past the Magwater, and then back toward the township business, and it's just loose and sloppy, and the fines blow away. So anyway, we're wondering, as a township, that, that would be seventy-seventh, so seventy-seven, seventy-sixth. And seventy-fifth is the Orm Road? Orm Road, so the main one would be the Towers Bay Road, which is seventy-sixth. And then seventy-seven, which is where Gollan is set up. But seventy-sixth, that's about three miles long from nineteen all the way to Bay, Lakeview Lodge. Yeah, about just over two and a half. So is there any way that you could try something with the township for a cost share? Because we're on board with you for our blading. So then, I was, if that would, you know, we could either give up that blading, or move that blading around to do blading more often in eighteen days. On the roads that aren't getting the Magwater, seventy-fifth and seventy-seventh pass the Magwater.
How much is a mile cost, Kevin, a Magwater?
About six thousand.
Mark, did, uh, Gollan, do we just use water, or did he use Magwater?
He used Mag.
He did.
Yeah. He was gonna, he was gonna, yeah. He was gonna use water, but then because of the loads, it's like three hundred thousand cubic yards are taken out of there, it's a sizable number, so a lot more traffic. So they decided to put down Magwater to, they happened to always run the water driver. So it's just, it's just done. Magwater to that site. So he would do it, so he put it down on its own, he did Woodland Resort, through there. So he's set up with some type of equipment that's putting this Magwater out. So he gave a quote to the township of five thousand a mile. Is it the same strength, I don't know, as what you're getting from?
A different application even.
It doesn't spray, it's a drip?
I know, it's a drangler, comes out of a sand spreader, and then they water it on the road.
Oh, no.
That's what he told me.
That's what he did at Woodland?
It hasn't, not that we can.
At the resort, but he didn't do that on the military training site, then. Bob Sling called it Magwater, and that stuff is calcium chloride, in those bags. Those flakes is calcium.
Well, so he told me it was magnesium.
Okay.
They're confused.
So five thousand a mile is what Gollan says he'll do it for. Is it enough? Well, it's, it's enough for us to ask to do a little pilot project, because it's quite good for a township. But we're trying to show some good faith down there to those homeowners in North Shore and beyond, that this eighteen-day rotation that we're on isn't enough. So is there any way that?
How many miles is that marked, total?
From nineteen, I would say three.
To, uh.
Uh, Lakeview? Yeah, let's say all the way down nineteen. Uh, the Towers Bay shop, or Towers Bay Center Road.
Pretty close to three, I want you to take, make the turn into the.
Would you go, would you do seventy-seven, ten, seventy-sixth, or just?
No, as a township, we can't, we, we wanna try seventy, seventy-six, and we're gonna put the traffic count there, count it down to justify doing just that one. So when seventy-fifth says, hey, how come we didn't get it done? Because of traffic home, we're doing it on that one, which is gonna help you anyway, with additional weightings, but we're gonna keep the main flow on the Magwater.
So you'd be looking at roughly fifteen thousand dollars for the, the three miles?
You don't have any traffic counts right now, though.
We were gonna start then, now we got permission. We're, we're going to do that.
Should we revisit this?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to, did I get some traffic counts, and then maybe we could look at, maybe try and something next year? I mean, because, you know, we already got the whole, we got one half of the summer down.
Okay.
I like the idea, though, I mean, to try it out, help you guys out a little bit.
What would you say by eliminating a, uh, grading?
Eliminating what?
The grading, you know, the grading every three weeks, or whatever.
Around an eighteen-day rotation.
What'd you pay for the Mag?
Two, this is coming?
Yeah, but it's a dollar for here.
Oh. Where's the guy?
It's two fifty, seven hundred and fifty dollars a mile, total charge for the Mag. So three miles would be.
A lot, but.
You know, give that up. Forfeit that, allow you to use that as a partial gift to you to give back to us, through Magwater.
Yeah.
Is there a small number that you could do this year, just so we can try it?
That'd be. Boy, I can see this like. Well, if they're like.
What, what I'd like to see is, I think we're gonna continually see this problem.
Yeah.
Because we're gonna continue to have resorts, we're, you know, and I think what we need to do as a commission is, we have to have a set of criteria. And so you walk in with numbers and say, we need this, and here's how we prove it. So we say, okay, here's the limit, we need X amount of cars, and above that, and then we'll do a cost share at that point. But that makes you guys collect data. Makes you prove you need it. And then we can figure out some kind of a system where we can help out, and then it'll give us at least the advantage of being able to budget for it year to year, if it's something we're gonna try to do. It's tough just coming in and saying, let's do this, and then, you know, blind without a, you know, and in all honesty, I mean, you're off the, you know, you live there, so you know where the traffic's going. But it's really nice to have some numbers saying, this is the one out of the three that's getting traffic, but most let's put it on that one. Give it a shot. Right.
I think we really need to tie the township or the locals into paying a lion's share of it.
No, I agree.
That way they show that, yeah, we're serious about it.
No, I, I think, you know, and I, I'm not gonna throw any numbers out, but I, you know, I think that's how we'll have to approach it, and then put some kind of a criteria in place, you know, other counties I know do do that.
What number comes to mind, Kevin, on that suggestion? From, uh, from the lion's share from us?
At least there is.
Well, will you leave it on, you leave it on a ratio, percentage based, now you're gonna be traveling compared to the.
You know?
I think you see what I'm saying.
Yeah, and that's what Jeff's saying, the more cars, maybe you pay a higher percentage or something.
Right, but, but I think, but I do think that, you know, it's, again, this comes back to this, we don't wanna be arbitrary. What we don't wanna do is make a decision with respect to your situation, Mark, and then have the next township come in and say, sorry. You know, and then, so that's the thing, is I think it really does have to be related to some data.
Yeah, you gotta have a set policy on, this is what the line is, so that there's definition in where we're going.
These three miles, there are a lot of people living along that three mile.
Uh, it's wide open until you get down into the resort.
Down into the lake shore. Yeah, and that, then there, there is a lot of homeowners down there, then there's a couple different resorts.
But their thought there is a whole, the road holds together a lot better, it's much dust this year.
I'm just trying to figure out how to split the cost up on your homeowner, that's what I'm trying to.
And another problem like Orms, for instance, a lot of those people may be from outside the county, they're not paying taxes in the county, or real estate taxes in the county.
Yeah, and that comes back to the same problem we'll have with anything, it's, you know, we have to balance everything on property taxes and, no matter where we're starting, yeah.
There's, there's one way, somebody's, uh, resorts can, uh, take care of that, too, if they're charging a thousand dollars for this lot for this trailer for the year. Okay, it's gonna be two hundred more than the mag water, these three miles.
Absolutely.
You know?
Yeah.
And somebody from Hart River will probably be happy to base it on it, you know? If they come across that way and, and they got, they're not gonna pay property taxes, but in essence, they're kinda, you know?
Yeah, but it's a user fee, it's, it's like a special assessment built into a lot, right? Yeah, I, you know, most people that use those would probably be more than happy to put another fifty bucks or a hundred bucks a year, making sure the road stays in good condition.
In terms of the cost, you know?
It's, it's something we definitely need to talk about, and help with some kind of a plan on how we're gonna help out, because, I mean, it's, it's gonna be a problem we're gonna continue to see here.
That road that Gollum packing out with that mag water on it, you're gonna see that for years. It's gonna be very beneficial, it won't take much to keep that in shape.
As long as the ranger doesn't come and put it all on the road, just to ditch.
No, we notify our op, our weight operators and he can see the color.
Oh, yeah, they, they know.
Yeah.
And it still needs to be maintained, be maintained, I don't know who's telling these people that they don't need to be maintained, but. I'll bet you into a rock that maybe they can sort they.
Yes, they do. Is Gollum putting a blade on it every other day?
I, I, that's probably.
Not often, but. You know, the potholes show up and you gotta get rid of the pothole, otherwise it's not safe for traffic. Washboard, once in a while the washboards show up.
It'd be interesting to see what he's doing.
You have to do it when it's, when it's wet.
Yeah, you have to, it's like.
You know, you can't walk pushing around when it's dry, it's a disaster there.
But it'd be interesting to see what, how he's doing it. If he's throwing water on there and then going in and doing it, you know, how often he's doing it? You know, what's the shape of the road, because three hundred thousand yards of rain out of there for John Deere?
I thought you, obviously you told me when I signed up on that.
The. Interested to watch that and see what happened with that road.
Yeah.
So what kind of help are you looking at on this project here, twenty-five percent?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask for a start, is if, if we were in the position as a township to do seventy-five percent up to fifteen, could you help with the remaining twenty-five as a gesture this year, because we wanna do it this year yet?
Is the mag guy still around?
No, it sounds like Gollum's gonna do this one off.
Yeah, because of the price and then.
What do you think, Kevin?
Yeah, that would be what, like, three?
Twenty-five fifteen thousand?
Be twenty-five hundred?
Thirty, thirty-seven fifty.
Are you worth a try?
Worth a try?
You worth a try?
Need a motion?
Probably, otherwise it's good during the, yes.
I'll make the motion.
Motion is there.
Well, you have thirty-five hundred as a figure. Last two hundred feet, we're not gonna tip a hell of a deal.
I, I will, I will agree with the motion, but Mark, I, I still think we need traffic count numbers. So I think, I think in, you know, contingent upon, like, you know, we, we agree with it, contingent upon you delivering us traffic numbers. Does that make sense?
Adam, we get the mag water on?
Well, I just, I just want the data, so, because again, otherwise we're just being arbitrary, again.
Let's start it now, so I can give you a report in two weeks, which is August first, you said, for your next meeting?
Yep.
So I can give you some numbers for two weeks, and then we can run it and pass the holiday, Labor Day?
Sure.
And what do we decide on those blading? They gonna move around?
I don't know, we can talk about that, that doesn't have to be decided here.
Thank you.
There's a motion, I need a second.
I'll second.
Oh, motion in a second.
Just because of the situation.
Brown.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye.
Lakeview.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Trying to protect Kevin.
Since we're all visitors, Paul, did you have anything that you wanted to share from the chamber?
No, thank you.
We had a meeting yesterday, it was very good.
Thank you.
Lot of good things going on in the chamber, you did a good job.
Hey, you guys are gonna next decide, too?
Yeah, eventually, once we get that building painted.
Some remodeling job, and a trailer looks fantastic and.
And the, uh, apartment looks good.
Yep.
Are there any announcements? We're, we're on two thousand eighteen budget, right?
Yeah.
Oh, I know, I know, we're all trying to skirt past that barrier.
That's not talking about the.
Yeah, discussion of two thousand eighteen budget.
Five months?
I'd just like to know which direction we want me to start with. Wages, if we're gonna do just a step increase, a step plus two percent?
Doing the cost of living? I don't think there's an adjustment.
I don't think there is. I think we're from, I think.
I thought they're moving the social security adjustment one point seven.
Well, you may be right, but.
I looked at it a little while ago, I was curious.
And you're going to use the half a percent.
Do we have any health insurance numbers back in?
Health insurance working on it.
Unfortunately, that might factor in.
Point three, point three percent is what, is what the code up for twenty-seven being was. But I guess we're looking at.
Yeah, we're.
They need to, they need to check personal intelligence.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I'm sorry, let me look this up.
Yeah, we're thirty percent after.
Sure, I've looked it up for years. Didn't that?
Yeah, I can't remember, I looked.
Two point one percent, two point one. Two point one is the, the cost of living for two thousand eighteen.
Yeah, okay, I knew it was, I knew it was higher, a little bit higher, but I couldn't remember exactly what it was. I read that a long time ago. By making a decision not around locking ourselves, then you're just giving a guideline for what we're looking at.
You're just giving me guidance to let the department heads know where to start.
I, I guess I, I'd like to see a step and a cost of living.
Can, I can do both.
Each county's already agreed on there, there goes two, and then point five, or probably two and a half percent.
So they, they don't give a step, they just, they just use the two then? What does our step account to? It ma, it depends on job description, correct?
And longevity.
Yeah.
And longevity, yeah.
Well, could we see, could we see, because I think, I didn't imagine, well, we should compete the cost of living, right? We should probably do three percent or a step and cost of living and see what the difference is. Is that, would that be possible?
Should go three or?
Three and a step plus cost of living, is that?
Well, yeah, I guess.
You can do a couple differences.
My, my thought scenario would be, I mean, we've always been of the opinion, I guess, since I've been on the commission, that we're always gonna move a step. Because we don't wanna fall behind.
Well, that's why I put that.
Yeah, that's why we put it in, so my thought would be, let's, let's do, uh, can we do multiple scenarios?
Wasn't that what we're just doing now?
Yeah, so straight step, step plus one on the cost of living and step plus two would be my thought. Then we can look at three different scenarios and we can see where we can go, you know? Could be the same as like a three percent move, you know, depending on what the step move is.
I don't imagine any county has a, a staff experience. That'd be my guess.
I, I'm on the high level.
Yeah.
Dentons don't have one, so I would guess any one, I don't even. Actually, perhaps even Wall Street, probably only, only in the Northeast that have one.
I like, I think the step works well, so.
We're probably pushing our timeline, though, we usually start on July first with these, so. Have a decision.
Needs more special things.
Oh, there you go.
We didn't have meetings with the department heads in the second meeting in August, is that correct?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, well.
But we.
Either before or after or before, preferably before, not after.
I know, I mean, I can start to schedule some next meeting, you know, to, to visit with them about stuff.
I guess my point was, we'll need to know what numbers put into our budget, where we're at on one, two, three, ten, sealed up, what I'm saying? Oh, we could do that.
You want a three scenario?
Well, that was just my, I, I don't know if we necessarily need three.
Plus two would be fine.
Yeah, maybe, maybe step plus one and step plus two. That'd be.
Oh, you're the department head's word.
Yeah, that way it's less work to do, I mean, I, I think we're all in the agreement that we're gonna look at some kind of cost of living plus the steps, so.
Oh, the steps, right.
Yeah, let's go step plus one, step.
Permission, so after that, they did that bullet a long time ago, put on step.
Yeah.
Because you always wanna go in high.
No, it makes sense, I got it, yeah.
Yeah. You can always feel that.
And I heard on radio, the grandpa's teachers settled in arbitration, so. I don't know what it was, they, I didn't mean to, I heard on radio. So it'd be interesting to see what happened there, I'm sure they got their step.
I think, I think it was, I think they settled for just their step, and then anybody that was maxed on the step system, that five hundred dollars or something like that.
You have to remember, the state's not here to nothing.
Yeah, right.
Well, so that's why we don't wanna do a, a step plus one or something like that.
And then I'll see if I can get numbers from Blue Cross.
Did you want to bring some departments in the first meeting?
I can, yeah, I'll start, I'll just start to bring them in. Because that's like a couple weeks away.
Yeah, and all the, all the outside boards are gonna be, probably what, first meeting in August, it'll be, at least preliminarily hammering out by the two or so.